Meeting after your break. Again, I want to say thank you to all those of our citizens who came out to be part of our public hearing this evening. I appreciate each and everyone who was here and every comment that was given. And again, we will be reviewing the content of what we share with us regarding concerns. And we will be reaching out to the, you know, necessary parties for the interest that we need. So again, thank you for that. Thank you to council for your part in having us on.
On that point, I'm assuming Connor Drake will be preparing answers to a number of these things?
So then these planning questions will come on, yes.
Do you have a good traffic?
Again, we're going to get into that a little bit with the PRAK recommendations for council to review the trends and the conditions. So that was one, and I'll go through that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will move on now to item seven, which is our council reports, and my report will be short. I had the privilege of going to our community school graduation, and it was really great to see our twenty nine graduates, I believe. I was able to present some awards to deserving students, and that was on June eight. On June, sorry, July third, again, was a short, quick and quiet month for me. I was able to attend the online hearing regarding zoning for this property that we've just discussed this evening. So that was it for me. Usually during some of your reports, I realize, oh yeah, I was in June. Oh yeah, so anyway, you all know what I'm doing. We'll move on to item seven, too.
We can include the seven point eight if you want to.
Thank you.
Back up here, thank you. Good to be here.
Thank you, your worship. I've attended all meetings of council. And like yourself, I was here Thursday or July third for the Zoom meeting on the plan. I'll remind council that, oh, and I've also attended the farm market on occasions since it opened, very impressive. A good group of dedicated vendors, well organized. The financial infrastructure meeting is a week from tomorrow at 4:00 PM. All welcome. I intend to attend the special Olympics opening that was all been invited to on July seventeenth. And that's all for me.
Thank you. I want to thank you for the information that you were able to present this evening in regard to, you know, the needs of our province and our communities. So thank you for that as well.
You're welcome.
Item seven three, Council of Britain.
Council of Britain has attended all regular council meetings. I did not attend the Zoom meeting, but I did watch the video afterwards. And also, your worship has already mentioned this, I appreciate the work that went into this presentation of Becky America. That's, that's great information, actually. And I'd like to mention one thing, one more thing before I go. You all received this little pity here. You look up in the top left-hand corner. It's going to be a new event this year at the public bridge events. It's going to be sponsored by Mr. John Craig. And what it's going to involve is Public Works is going to maul a particular area over by the gazebo. And John Craig is putting up $1,282 for a hole in one. What it's going to be is there's going to be golf cubs that are going to be provided and golf balls, floating golf balls that will be retrieved from the river. And there's going to be a raft about 150 yards out in the center of the river with a bucket in the middle of it. And anyone that puts a golf ball in that bucket will receive $1,282. Now, if you put it in the raft, you're going to receive an alternate prize. But I just wanted to mention that because John is really he's really enjoying the the time he has put in to put this on, and he is putting up the money for all of the expense and everything. And I really appreciate John Craig, and I wanted to mention this at council tonight. Thank you, your worship, very much.
That's a perfect nine iron. There are 150 yards downhill.
Well, it is for some people.
But it's very intense. That's, that's.
Oh, I hope it goes well.
That's lovely. So we will move on to Council of Walton.
Thank you, your worship. I was able to attend council meetings. One was via Zoom. I'd like to say it was great to host last council meeting out of the CCC Park. Is that the first time council's ever done an outside meeting? I think it was really well, well done, and the next one is in Waterville.
Yes, I think to determine on a date.
Two weeks. It was supposed to be the 22nd, but we may have to do it here.
We're considering, considering location change just because of another movement.
Yes. So I was involved with the adult ball hockey league. We wrapped up in June fourteenth. I had a great final Saturday, big upset in the finals, just like you want to see, but there was a lot of participation. The new arena or the new complex was was a really good change. It made the games better. The seating, there was lots of people there watching. It was a great event. It went off, you know, went off great. So I want to thank the staff at the complex. They were great all year by extending an hour for us to host it. So we didn't have to start earlier and everything, everything was great. It was really good. That's everything.
And we'll move on to Council of Boom.
Thank you, worship. I attended all regularly scheduled meetings. Did a full review of the Zoom call that was provided regarding the rezoning opportunity that we have in front of us there from this evening. And had an opportunity to connect with some of my fellow councillors regarding the issue. Had some productive and good informative conversations with themselves.
Thank you.
Your worship, may I say something? And I hope I don't embarrass him and make him feel bad. I appreciate Council Walton calling me after the Zoom meeting and the talk that we had afterwards. He's, he's a councillor that really enjoys what he's doing. And I just, I just want council to know how much I appreciate him. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I say it all the time. I'm going to say it again, and we have the best team. I feel very fortunate to serve our community, the groups that we're one of. I would echo that. No special reports for this evening. Item nine, this is from prior, I'm sorry, yeah, item nine. No, this is from a prior meeting. We will move on to item ten, new business, and review of the PRAK written views. So again.
So council had requested the reviews from the Planning Review and Adjustment Committee or the PRAK committee. And that is a, one of the steps in the Community Planning Act when you are doing a rezoning. So I have the letter here. It's been provided to council, but I will read the letter. On June 25th, Planning Review and Adjustment Committee, PRAK, of the Western New Brunswick Regional Service Commission, considered an application submitted by MVP 171 GP Inc. To add residential five, R five zone, to the Town of Heartland zoning bylaw and rezone the property identified as PID 10286987 from residential two, R two, to residential five, R five. Please be advised that PRAK has recommended that the proposed rezoning be approved subject to the following terms and conditions. One, that any necessary easements, municipal easement and public utility easements be granted gratuitously to the satisfaction of the manager of public works. Two, that garbage storage shall be provided on the property in accordance with section 3.23 of the zoning bylaw. Three, that the parking lot be paved with all parking spaces clearly delineated prior to connection to municipal water and sewer services, or as otherwise approved by the development officer. Or that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the developer enter into a developers agreement with the Town of Heartland for any municipal services and infrastructure associated with the construction and maintenance of the proposed development. Five, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the site plan be updated to include a four-meter landscaped buffer along all property lines except Rockland Road in accordance with the landscaping plan approved by the development officer. The buffer shall account for drainage and grading as required by item seven. Include a solid opaque fence with a minimum height of 1.8 meters along the shares boundary with PID 10105963 and 10265957 and be completed within two years following the final inspection unless otherwise approved by the development officer. Six, that all site construction shall be carried out in general accordance with the final site plan approved by the development officer. Seven, be engineered drainage plans and profiles be delivered to the town's consulting engineers for their approval prior to the issuance of the building permit. Eight, that as-built plans as described in item seven be submitted and approved by the town's consulting engineer prior to connecting to a municipal water and sewer, water and sewer services or as otherwise approved by the development officer. Nine, that no building on the subject property shall exceed four stories in height and shall not contain more than 64 residential units. And number 10, that any future development expansion or intensification on the subject property, including additional multi-unit buildings, extension to the existing building or new accessory structures beyond those shown on the approved site plan shall be subject to the review and approval of a development officer. As part of this review, the development officer may require confirmation of municipal servicing capacity, submission of an updated site plan with appropriate setbacks, and buffering from adjacent land uses, and any studies deemed necessary, including but what, but not limited to stormwater management and traffic impact to ensure compatibility with surrounding development and the adequacy of municipal services. So that is the letter. After the PRAK had reviewed, after, after the PRAK had reviewed the, the site, the information, that was their list of recommendations. In reviewing them, I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to specifically talk about number 10 and also bring up a traffic study for two extra things. But were there any other concerns that should be raised or things that you think need to be amended that should be discussed with our planning director, with the service commission?
Michelle, if you could. And one of the speakers this evening brought up, and I realized that I wasn't as knowledgeable as I should be. The composition of PRAK and its mandate. Did you provide us with that information?
I can get Connor to provide it. I could probably give you a, but I don't know what he would want. I don't want him to speak and mislead council, but, so I can get that for, I can get that for council or for the public.
Along that line, there are members from other communities besides Heartland, correct?
Yes.
So what if there, and I know I looked at a question that was asked tonight. There's a development going on in Heartland. Why do we have only one member on that committee? Well, if there's a development going on in Centerville, do they, do they have to have another member on their, on the committee?
So the problem is that if a committee, it's made up, it's consistent, it doesn't change for every item that comes up for consideration.
But we don't need two members on that committee.
No, and I don't know if they do it by population, like Woodstock, for example, might have two members and we have one. I really don't know. And actually, that was not a good example because Woodstock doesn't get its land use planning services from the service commission. So they wouldn't have anybody else, correct?
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
And they're all like surveyors or they're all people that are involved in like inspectors or.
They're not all, no, they're.
The number of people from this community on that committee, one is sufficient, correct?
I, I believe for the number, to my knowledge, they are not looking for a second through someone put it that way. And historically, Heartland has not had a large number of rezonings and variances and those sorts of things that a PRAK might take a look at. Since I've been here, there's been very few go-through. I was used to more than this, really.
That concern then is not really bad.
The concern about only having one member from Heartland on there, I don't, yeah. But I'll get more information from Connor to be able to provide to council and the public once more.
And we can include in that PRAK's mandate from the Western County Development Services Commission? So is condition 10 outside of the traffic that seems to draw a bad picture?
So, yes, so number 10, so I provided some notes for council. The front page looks like this. I think you have this.
Yep.
So condition 10 addresses how future development on the subject property is managed and whether it should require a new rezoning process. Given the size of the lot, potential for subdivision, and strong public interest in the scale and form of development, this condition is particularly important. Council's decision clear will determine whether future buildings such as additional multi-unit dwellings, townhouses, or seniors housing can proceed under administrative staff review or must return to council for public scrutiny. So under administrative, administrative staff review, that's referring to the planning director and development officer at the service commission. So I've included four, three different options, I guess. There's the fourth one that you can go rogue. Option one, this is the most permissive option, and this was actually what PRAK recommended. So this was the number 10 as I read it. So this wording would not require a rezoning or community feedback if the developer were to move forward with a second 64-unit apartment building. However, it would require review by the development officer. So currently, the development officer is Connor Trilling at the service commission, or he can delegate that. He has someone else on staff that he sometimes delegates that to, so that's where that would be. And so I've highlighted this section just to show where the difference is. So that would be any future development expansion or intensification on the subject property shall be subject to the review and approval of the development officer. So that's what to keep in mind for option one. Option two.
But option one doesn't specify a time period.
Time period.
Any future development could be, one year could be 15 years.
Yes. Option two, the R five zone would allow one or more multiple unit dwellings, a senior citizen's housing development, a townhouse or roadhouse dwelling. This option allows up to 18 unit buildings to be added with the development officer's review, but would require a rezoning for any multi-unit on the subject property or any future property subdivided from it that is greater than 18 dwelling units. So this option two allows a second building up to 18 units, or they would have to rezone if they're going more than 18 units for the second building.
Do we have any intention about a second building?
Basically, it'll depend on demand. They really need to get the first one done, see how much demand there is. I mean, if they fill it before it's completed, they're probably going to want to do a second building. But as has been mentioned previously, we do have other developers who are considering building some multi-unit residential units here in Heartland. So without knowing what that's going to look like, the developers aren't certain if they would move forward with another building, a multi-unit building at this point. It's really just the final demand. Yes.
But does option two allow for another 64 unit building?
Not without a rezoning. It only allows for an 18, up to 18 units without a rezoning for option two. Option three is the most restrictive. The council wants a rezoning application for any future development so that it includes public feedback, the following, the following term and condition could be included. And I did have a note there, please note that the planning director has advised that the option goes against the town's municipal plan's objectives to provide infill, housing diversity, and efficient land use. However, if this is how council wants to proceed, it will be taken into consideration when Heartland's overall municipal plan review gets underway again, so that council's new goals can be included. And then option four, as I mentioned, it could be any variation of the above or something completely different. And if, so what I'm looking for at this point is council's feedback on do one of these options for item 10, is there any one that resonates with you? Or is there, because I do need to take it back to this mission.
Just from the doctor.
Sure.
10, as it is written in schedule B.
Yes.
One of the speakers tonight took objection to the use of the word may and opposed the word shall.
Because I looked that up, I know, but I must be looking at the wrong section.
So in the second line, as you flip the page. Development officer may require.
Okay. So the bylaw, so that's what, those terms and conditions are wrapped, they're tentative, that were in the bylaw. So what has been, because I've been going back and forth with Connor on this, and we have been coming up with these. So this one does say shall be subject to the review and approval of a development officer.
Development officer shall require, how can you make this?
Oh, okay. I see where you're saying, shall.
Fifth line.
Yes, they will, he will want that. So yes, that's no problem to change that to shall. That was the original plan anyways. That was why, that was why they only submitted their rezoning application for one building because we were not 100% sure that we have the capacity today to, to be able to handle all three buildings plus the other development that's being proposed. So yeah, we would be confirming the water and sewer capacity.
So if we don't go with option one, will this, will this impact the developers' ideas for building here at all? Because what we're saying is if we go with anything other than option one, we're not guaranteeing him anything other than the one building, correct? But that may change his idea of whether he wants to develop here on, yes?
Potentially. Option two automatically allows up to 18 units.
It limits his capacity, but he'd still have the option to build based to that capacity. See, I'm kind of torn because I agree with some of the things that the people said about the traffic coming in and out of that area and on that road. If we have 200 apartments up there, that's going to greatly impact how to get around up there. So if we allow option one, we have no say over it after, right? We can't change it. If we pick option two.
Unless you don't have water and sewer capacity. And that confirmation has to come from the town.
Right, yeah. No, I understand. I'm just, you know, we have to really think about this because if we allow him to, we could put the first building up there and it could be a mess. It could be traffic problems out, and then we have no say whether he says, well, I'm going to put another one up there.
Look, let's put this in perspective. We're talking about 100 parking spots, right? There's 1,600 people that work in the industrial park today.
Outside of town, most of them.
Outside of town. They're all coming into town somehow. Most of them drive to work. So we're, you know, just have that perspective. That's the volume. Downtown day and night, Ross employees, well over 200 people. On the night shift, there's well over 200 people showing up that we got to have them there.
Yeah, no, I.
On any given Saturday, there's that many motorcycles that go down by my, my porch.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I'm just concerned. I'm not concerned about any time other than 7:30 to 8:30 Monday to Friday and 2:45 to 3:30. That's, that's my concern because there are a lot of kids who walk. There are a lot of people that need to get to the school. If we add.
So potentially, you know, now if we asked our director of public works, could we improve the sidewalk from McLean Avenue up to the high school? He would say, yes, if we have the budget. Though that can be modified. The volume of traffic, you know, 100, 100 additional cars sound like a lot when you're on the house across the street, and it isn't. You know, those people have dollar points tonight, don't they? But 100 cars in the grand scheme of things, Monday to Friday, 7:30 to 8:30.
I'm not, no, and I agree with you about the 100 parking spots. I'm talking about if he builds two more buildings and that turns into 400 cars. That's the only thing I'm thinking, right? Like.
This is a great problem.
Absolutely. It is, it is, but it could be a bad, it could be, it has to be managed properly. We have to understand that. There to this, like, that is right on our school's backyard. And if we're talking about adding, let's just say everything goes the way they want it to, and they add, it's 200 buildings, 190, whatever. So the one thing you have to remind yourself though, too, through this expansion is that annual basis of that you will have resources to address the issues that will be at hand from the facilitate this growth. And as a responsible council, we'll look for ways to address it with the resources bestowed on us by the growth. So in that case, when we do find the conflicts and we want more crosswalks and we want flashing signs that are illuminated by the solar power and the things that everyone wants to have, we'll have the ability to do so as a basis to grow our infrastructure to accommodate this growth, but also allow for residual to maintain our infrastructure that we currently have. Without seizing some form of opportunity and growth and facilitating this, we will continue to have a stagnant basis, Stuart said earlier in the evening, along with, I can tell from my industry, increasingly rising costs of the things that we require for infrastructure upgrades with a stagnant revenue line.
Yeah, I'm glad you two young people are on council.
I mean, it doesn't take long to do the math when you. No, no, I agree with 10%.
It should be a turnoff line into the school, a turnoff line.
No, but I, I agree with George's points. When we come to these problems, we can address them. Or whoever's on council at that time can address them. I just want to make sure that everybody understands what could possibly happen there. And if we're talking about Bellator, possibly, possibly, whenever they decide or what they decide to do. That's, you know, that's a lot of traffic. It's great. It is. It's great for Heartland. Heartland needs to grow. Heartland needs to grow 100%. But how fast can we grow? How much should we give? We will have to maintain the pace as we have productive movement within the, within the growth of our community. We will have to be a productive organization that addresses the concerns of the public as we have to facilitate that. I mean, that's really the responsibility we bestow upon ourselves by sitting here. And by having the resources and that tax base at hand, anticipated $280,000, we can act more swiftly. And we also have the ability of what we've done within our financial infrastructure to have the ability to address those concerns if we need to ahead of time, realizing that will actualize that revenue over the course within the calendar year by setting up the reserve base at Tina's.
Not just reserves, but.
No, but the. I guess.
Need to plan and have an additional placement.
Misspeaking about the reserve and also having the, the LLCs that have been established that we can address some things in, in advance so that we can facilitate through the revenue that we're going to gain throughout the course of the year when the tax base does arrive.
A good example of what we're talking about is you go to Fredericton and the extension of Prospect. It used to be a farm, both sides of the road, still is on the right-hand side coming up with the West End church there. Look at all the development that's going on on the other side of the road. There probably is, what, at least six or eight multi-level buildings going up up there, and we're, they're not talking about 100. Uh, multi-level buildings going up up there, and we're, they're not talking about a hundred cars, they're talking about. You know, five hundred to a thousand cars coming out of there every morning and every night. They handled the problem, okay, I think probably we'll come up with a split, or you guys will come up.
I had a business meeting at Odell Park in Fredericton today, crispy green space owned and operated by the city of Fredericton for years and years and years. Right across the street are three new seven-story apartment buildings. Uh, just the way it is, and developers need that density because of market conditions.
I'm curious, how many units between Brennan's and B D I and Brad's? Did, went up on the hill by on McLean Avenue and how many vehicles did that cause major concern?
You, you, you got, you're, you're talking about a problem and you, and you're saying, on the other hand, it's a nice problem to have, well, it's a nice problem. You'll fix it, don't worry, I mean, you, you be concerned about it, but.
That's all I'm worried, I'm just raising concerns, and I, I'm all for Heartland growing, I love it, I'm excited, I think it's great. But we just got to be responsible as a council to grow at a pace that we can keep up.
I believe we are.
I believe it's around sixty-eight of those three.
Not there, yeah, so. And sixty-eight apartments and a lot of those have two vehicles, did we have an extreme?
Right, and they're, and they're an adversity area as well, I mean, they've all migrated to the same situation, and I mean, we'll, we'll face some of the same concerns up the hill.
And we got to understand too, that low-income housing does not mean. You know, what, like this gentleman said, this is single mothers, this is, you know, seniors, this is other people, you know, disabled people.
It's already low income housing up to the seniors.
I know, but we can't have such a. No, I know, but we can't have such a negative view on what they call low-income housing, there's many other things that come with low-income housing.
Yep, I think, I think honestly, we want to be a town and a community that embraces. You know, a certain population that we can support low-income housing, I mean, we look at, I looked at some statistics today, since two thousand. The general basis of, of the income of, of a family. Has gone from twenty percent of their general income being consumed by housing to now thirty percent. And then along with the grocery increases, along with everything else that's increased, we want to be able to facilitate a community that not only. Your only option is to sink yourself into poverty through owning a single-family dwelling and be house poor. We want to present options that allow people to live the life how they want to live, but live it in our community as well, facilitate that, so I, I think it's very well.
Based, based on how he's configured this unit and the different. Elab- elaborations of how many bedrooms, what the households are gonna look like, the singles, the bachelors, all that stuff. It allows us to accommodate a lot of different social dynamics and also immigration and cultures and how people live. All within this own community, they'll create up the hill.
And it allows him to fill the building.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not a lot of twenty-year-old couples with, with one or two kids that are gonna go out and spend three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars.
Or we can afford the damn payment.
Yeah, they can't, they don't, so you gotta have places for them to go.
It's an unfortunate situation that a lot of the, you know, my generation and younger generations are gonna face the barrier of entry into ownership. It's, it's definitely something that we have to be aware of, that even though we say, we look at and watch the national, go, oh geez, that's too bad about Toronto, or anything else, those people can't afford that. It will migrate this way, our way as well.
I think we need to remember as well, and, and many comments, and from most people who sadly this evening. Their issue was not with the elements, it was with the size of the building and the safety concerns.
Yeah.
So, and there, and the legitimate concerns that.
Yep.
We will continue to review and, and, you know.
Just, just a, a question. Say, if, if we went back to, I don't know, I'm just speculating, back to the developer and say, okay, we only want three floors in this. Would that throw the whole, er, wrench in the whole thing?
I don't think we know.
No, we wouldn't know, that they'd have to look at their business plan to see whether, um, the cost of the building and the rent coming in from three floors. Is still a viable.
We, we do know this must be a preferred option.
Yes.
Yeah, it's their only proposal, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, did you presume one, Michelle?
Uh, yeah, so, so can I get council's feedback on which of those three options or if you'd like something totally different?
You mean the road option?
Yeah.
I think when we talked about it through previous council meetings, that we kind of knew the plan was that if you build one, more would come. And I think that at that time, council was very supportive of that idea. So I'm in support of option one, it's.
That is that, that's Connor's suggestion, is it?
That was prac's suggestion.
I, I think I'm in agreement with Sam, uh.
I do agree with Sam, it'd be, it'd be almost wrong for us to pull the rug out from underneath the individual that's committed to the infrastructure in our community. Um, and by that number one, we also will reaffirm that we have the correct infrastructure and the ability to handle the unit and serve our citizens, right? So that addresses the direct concerns.
And that's assuming that maybe comes shout?
Yes, I've made note of that on here.
So it is unanimous then amongst council, if the mayor agrees, but we've got two councillors missing, could we defer any of this, or do you need this in timing?
So this is, this is for me to go back to, um, the development officer, um, planning director and development officer. To let him know what your initial feedback is, so that he can finalize the bylaw with the terms and conditions. As we think it's going to, um, be what you'd like. And so you're not going to make a motion on it until the next council meeting. Um, when you review, uh, when you consider the second and third readings. So at that point, we can, uh, walk in what it is you're looking for and make sure what, what Connor's included. Is, uh, is your preference.
Good.
Okay, so the last item then is the discussion for an additional, um, traffic study. So council may wish to consider a traffic impact study. Um, the planning director, um, had advised that an impact study would typically be limited. To the localized area around the proposed development, so issues like Orson Street and Main Street would be another matter. Um, furthermore, in a larger municipality, a traffic impact study would probably not be required to the scale development. Depending on the location, but it may be worth it in Heartland's case, it may be possible to negotiate a broader study area. Including the intersection of Main and Orser, though the developers' agreement, um, term, I've mentioned in term number four. Provided, uh, both parties agree to the expanded scope. Prac ultimately did not add this term, though it was discussed, but council may wish to. So what I've included is, um, that prior to the issuance of a building permit. The developer submit a traffic impact study by a qualified professional for review by the development officer and town engineer. And a required off-site improvements identified shall be addressed through the developers' agreement.
Question.
Yes.
Do you have any proposed cost to a study of that nature?
It would be up to the developer to do it, so no, I don't have the.
It's, it would be their expense?
This would be a requirement, yes.
Oh, there you go.
That, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, that the developer submit a traffic impact study. Now, it doesn't say who covers the cost of any, um. Issues that are.
Arise from.
Found, right, yes.
So, traffic study, uh. And, uh. N B liquor requires a traffic study for any agents of store. And that's typically six to four thousand dollars. Now, the traffic study in the city of Fredericton with a new round of that could cost four million dollars. So before we impose a traffic study on a potential developer that we want to be friends with for a long, long time.
Nice to know what it costs.
It should, uh, pass our limits.
How, how broad are you looking at the localized traffic study or the broader traffic study?
Well, I'm not a traffic study expert.
According to this, a traffic study costs about thirty-five hundred dollars per intersection.
So let's go a half an intersection. Like a hundred tunes.
No, the thing is, to have a general idea because, uh, you know, developers get hit with terms and conditions every day of life. Um. But a big price tag one might be enough to, to stay on, so.
And, and what would you be looking for in the traffic study?
I have no idea.
How many cars are going by?
Section, we have the.
So, yeah, like, are you looking to find out, do you need to stop traffic light at that location?
How far our school zone should be?
Yeah.
Do we need a turning lane off Rockland Road?
Time of day when the traffic is target.
Yes, yes, I, I don't, yeah, I don't know how many vehicles and how to go there.
And I think the.
That should not be just developers.
They should take in Tim Horton's, uh, between seven o'clock and eight o'clock every morning through the week.
I do think this is, this should be a huge consideration, I mean.
Yeah, the traffic study Sussex did in twenty sixteen was a hundred and two pages long.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, the concerns that were addressed this evening.
But that's for the.
We need, we need to look into that, and I don't know, you know, to what degree or to.
Right.
You know, I don't know what it needs to look like, but we need to address it.
Okay. And if we don't have everything, there is, like, for the next council meeting, for example, if, if I'm able to get you the information as far as cost. If there's something else comes up that you need, there's nothing to say that you, like, it doesn't have to. Um, either go through at the next council meeting or not at all, it, it can go another council meeting, you know what I mean? You can, you can do a reading or no reading, except the next one, so, but I can, I can see if I can find out, um.
So are you, are you fully in contact with M V P?
Yes.
On a regular basis?
Stuck, not regular basis because Connor is their main point of contact. For this rezoning, so I'm trying to step back a bit, um.
But they seem to be pleased with?
Yes. Yes. And they were even fine with it, they attended the prac meeting and they understood the, the questions that they, that came in. And then there wasn't, there weren't any surprises.
Yeah, this isn't their personal, yeah, they know all this, yeah.
Okay, I will have my own attention.
Thank you, Michelle.
So the date of our next meeting is the July twenty-second. Meeting, we have, had initially thought that we would go to the Waterville Community Hall, but this, it would fall in the same timeline as. Uh, the other readings for this zoning, uh, rezoning, so we thought perhaps it might be best to keep, uh, the meeting here. And we'll reach out, uh, perhaps for August and see if we can meet in Waterville then.
Should we not have clarification and on the. On what we just discussed as well as the traffic study before we had a day in first reading? Or will we have that information separately?
So you already got first reading?
Yeah.
And there's two readings left to do, so that's why I said I will bring the information to you about the cost for the traffic study. And see if I can get some additional information of what it might include or some different levels. Uh, for a larger or smaller study, for example, um, and then. I can present that to council at the next council meeting and, and council can decide if you're ready to move forward with. Second and or through reading or whether you want more time.
And so, uh, then the next meeting would be August twelfth, uh, here at the town hall again. Um, if there is no further business for this evening.
I would ask your worship to rejoin to closed session, I'll second that.
Motion has been moved in, seconded all those in favor, we should write it down.